Good evening and welcome to this evening's school board meeting of the Fairmont area schools. For roll call, all members are present with the exception of President Rufus Rodriguez. Please stand and join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the minutes before you.
I move to approve the September 12th, 2017 school board minutes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have the agenda and as far as I know, we have two changes to the agenda. In celebrations and community reports, we have Eric Head here along with Principal Niss to talk about homecoming. And also in board committee reports, Julie has a report from Southern Plains. Are there any other changes? Okay, I had to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda with those changes.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right to celebrations and community reports.
Well, I am very pleased to introduce you to one of our student council members, a senior, Eric Head, who's going to just talk to you about our activities for homecoming this week and tell you about the planning prior to this and what's been going on. So I'm just going to let Eric, and I did ask him to wear his outfit that he had on for today too. So it was kind of, it was bigger than, so he can tell you about that too. So I'm just going to kind of let Eric talk about homecoming this week.
Yeah, hi. I'm Eric Head. I'm a junior and I'm the student council vice president. No, that's okay. And so today, I'm talking about homecoming. As you've probably seen, downtown, all the beautiful decorations of the windows. And at Fairmont, homecoming is a really exciting time because everybody shows their school pride through all the dress up days and the red and white days. And it's just a really exciting time. So as the student council vice president, we started really early planning for homecoming. We met twice in the summer just to discuss what we wanted to happen, all the dress up days that we wanted. And then once school started, then we really started to finalize everything that we needed for T-shirts. And all that is pretty much put on by student council. So on Monday, or we started off the week last Friday with Elysium to celebrate the seniors. And that's where we had the senior video with everybody's baby pictures. So that was pretty embarrassing for all the seniors, but it's a tradition. And that's where we also announced the candidates. And then moving into this Monday, yesterday, our dress up day was woke up like this/pajama day. And that's so we got to see everybody in their nice pajamas. And it's really fun to see the teachers too when they dress up. Last evening, we had the fair and feed, which is, we had inflatables and lawn games, which was supposed to be out in the horseshoe, but since it was raining, we moved it into the main gym. And that also had food catered by, or not catered, but brought in by FFA. They always, that's a tradition for them. And following that, we had Ironman volleyball with the junior and senior boys playing volleyball against each other. And what was supposed to be powder puff football with the junior and senior girls, but we changed it into a game of steal the pins, which was still quite exhilarating. And today, we moved to character day. So this is my Mr. Potato Head costume. We were a part, I was a part of the Toy Story group. So that's what this thing is all about. Tomorrow, we move into extreme weather Wednesday for the seventh and through 11th graders. And then we also have the senior citizen day, which is probably the most exciting day of the year for the seniors, because they get to dress up like senior citizens and yell at all the younger kids, which they really enjoy. Then on Thursday, we have class color day. And on Friday, we have red and white day. And we also have the pep fest and the coronation during the day. And then there's the parade at four and the football game at seven and a dance following that, which student council puts on. So we'd love to see you dress up in red and white, everybody in the community. It's really fun to see that. So come out, wear your red and white and come to the game. And the, yeah, coronation too, you can feel free to come to. So thank you for having us. It was really a pleasure.
Thank you. Sounds like-
Any questions for-
No, I just appreciate the work that student council has put into this and especially that they've been working on it for so long. It's a big, busy week with students who are busy in most of these activities themselves. And I know it's a lot of work and we appreciate your efforts and the fun that it brings and the school spirit that it brings to all the students.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a superintendent's report because Superintendent Brown is still not with us. But we do have a school calendar that I'd like to highlight some events on. The first is that, well, we have all the events for homecoming. We like to encourage everyone to come to those. Also, on Thursday, October 5th at 7:30 a.m., the board will be meeting with students, high school students, in the commons at the high school and junior high students as well. And anybody, if you know, if your students have concerns or things that they think are exciting that are going on, we encourage you to encourage them to come and talk to us. We want to hear from our students. We want to know what they enjoy at school, what they would like to see changed, if they have any suggestions. Our students are innovative and very bright and we want to hear from them. We also have on Monday, October 9th at 10 a.m., there's an operations committee meeting. We have SDCC on the 9th also in the afternoon at 3:45 in the bud room. October 10th is our next school board meeting. And on October 19th and 20th, there is no school for the students as it is Education Minnesota. On the 23rd of October, there's also no school because we have a teacher workshop. And then we have another board meeting on Tuesday, October 24th. Anything else you'd like to add to the calendar or note? Okay, then we'll move on to financial business. Sue? Oh, I'm sorry, donations. Thank you.
One donation to share. So I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Fairmont 3M, through the 3M Gives Supplies for Schools program, donated to Fairmont Elementary five boxes of school supplies in approximate value of $3,400. Be it resolved by the Fairmont area school board to gratefully accept this gift.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have financial reports and bills.
Tonight, on the agenda, we have the approval of the wires and transfers from September 8th through September 21st and the payment of the September 26 bills. So you have the wires and transfer sheet in front of you from that September 8th through the 21st. Just a couple to bring to your attention. The middle one from the state of Minnesota for $4,469. That was from the, as I said, Minnesota Department of Education, state of Minnesota for an Ag grant. And that was for some of Amber's time in July and August. And then the bottom one is for $7,663. That is for the ACT test reimbursement for our students that took that this past spring. Any questions? Okay, then moving to the check register dated today, I just have a few to bring to your attention. Check number 60260 made out to Jay Hokinson print. And this is for uniforms for our custodial maintenance personnel. And the district does provide their shirts as uniforms. The next one is check number 60272 made out to Minnesota West. We have an agreement with Minnesota West for concurrent enrollment, or you may have heard it called college in the schools. And this is where our teachers are teaching our students onsite. The students receive college credit. And we're paying Minnesota West for 16 sections at $2,200 each section. Check number 60286 made out to SHI International. This is for protective covers for iPads. Last April, we purchased or put in an order for iPads and these protective covers. And the iPads were received some time ago, but the protective covers were in back order. But they're now received and being paid for. And then check number 60292 made out to Trevor Reagan. This is for a training on October 23rd. And it's being paid for by SDCC and it's for teachers and parents. And he is going to present with a focus on growth mindset. And in the specific training he'll bring to the staff and parents, he'll discuss the need to make mistakes to truly learn. The workshop will address how to handle mistakes. You can actually learn from the experience. That's all I had on that check register and the wires and transfers. And Julie and I did review everything prior to the board meeting. Do you have any questions?
If there are no questions, I then would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for September 8th, 2017 to September 21st, 2017 and payment of the September 26, 2017 bills.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we now have the proposed 2017 payable 2018 tax levy. Sue?
Okay. So tonight on the agenda, we have, as Nicole said, the approval of the proposed 2017 payable 2018 tax levy. So the levy is set in calendar year 2017. The taxpayers pay during calendar year 2018. And the school district will have these dollars available for their use during the 18-19 school year. So next school year. That starts July 1, 2018. School districts have levy authority in two different ways. One is by legislative action and the other is by voter approval. The levy is based on estimates and the biggest thing is estimated pupil units. So we're estimating now in the first few weeks of this school year, what our students will be in the 18-19 school year. And then on some estimated expenditures like reemployment and career intact, things like that. And then when we have actual numbers for pupil units and expenditures, we have something called levy adjustments, so that the state brings the adjustments to actual based on, because it's estimated now and bring it to actual. Many of our revenues have a levy component and a state aid component. So when the referendum market value of the district goes up, then the split between the local levy and the state aid changes. And for this levy, pay 18, the referendum market value of the district did go up. So the levy portion of the revenue will also go up. There'll be no increase in revenue for the school district, but more of the revenue will come from the local property owner and less from the state of Minnesota. As you recall, beginning with the last school year, 16-17 school year, school district had the authority to levy for long-term facility maintenance issues. And that funding rolled in over three years. So for last school year, we could levy or receive funding for $193 per pupil unit. For the current year, it's $292. And for this levy, it goes up to $380 per pupil unit. So with this levy for the 18-19 school year, we do have a significant increase in the levy due to those long-term facility maintenance dollars. Another area where the levy is going up is VPK, which is voluntary pre-kindergarten. We found out in August that we were approved for voluntary pre-kindergarten for the current school year and for next school year. So in this levy, it shows those pupil units. And it's included in all revenues that we use pupil units, so the referendum, operating capital, any of those types of things. And one item that's not reflected in the dollar amount of this proposed levy, but will reduce our levy is the Ag credit. So the levy amount is before the school building bond Ag credit that you may have heard about in recent legislation. The Minnesota Department of Education doesn't know our exact credit because it's by individual parcel of land. So the farmer, landowner, will have their credit on their own individual tax statement. And that dollar amount will come off of our levy or reduce our levy. And then the money will come to us from the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota didn't give us, you know, didn't change our levy. But Springstead, who we've used for other financial things as our financial advisor, they estimate that the farmers, landowners will pay about $386,000 less in taxes in this levy than they did in the pay 17 levy. So if we were able to take that off of our levy and show that, it would look like we'd have about a 1% reduction from what we're looking at. So if you look at appendix B, you can see that what we are, what the operations committee is proposing is a 6% increase from pay 17 to pay 18. Our max levy authority would really be an 8.3% increase. But we talked with operations committee and decided to under levy in one area where we don't lose out on any state aid or anything and go with a 6% increase. If you go to the bottom of that appendix B, you can see a little comparison. So at pay 14, we levied $5,577,000. Pay 15, $5,141,000. Pay 16, $500,399,000. And then for the next year, the pay 19, there was no increase. It was still $5,399,000. And then this pay 18 proposed, $5,722,000. If we would go from pay 14 to pay 18, that's only a 2.6% increase. So if we hadn't had that reduction that year, if we'd have just had slight increases each year from pay 14, it would have been about a 0.65% increase each year. So the operations committee is proposing for pay 2018, a levy increase of 6% and the levy amount would be $5,722,963.83. Again, this is the proposed levy. And then we bring it back to the board on December 12th and do a final levy then. At that point in time, we cannot increase this dollar amount. The dollar amount could be decreased by the school board. Again, that meeting is December 12th. And just a reminder, the levy is for revenues for the school district for the 18-19 school year. May I answer? Any questions?
When we had our operations committee meetings, Sue, there was one point that you were waiting to hear back for from clarification for the state. Did they get back to you about that or when you were doing your calculations?
There haven't been any changes in our levy since then.
Okay.
So there wasn't any other things that would change.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we had talked about you could do a levy the maximum, but everything looks to be good and so we can go with a dollar amount or a 6% increase. Any other questions?
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
All right, because we have no old business, we'll move to new business. Dan, which is the proposal for the tax levy.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the proposed 2017 payable 2018 tax levy to include a 6% property tax increase.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion in the second to approve the proposed 2017 payable 2018 tax levy to include a 6% property tax increase. Any discussion?
It's important to point out, the point that Sue made is actually quite a few of the people in our district will actually be getting a significant reduction because of the state legislative action last year. So it won't be, like I say, going up for everybody like that. Some people might be pleasantly surprised when they see that, that the state has taken over a lot of that burden from landowners, so.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Personnel, Dell?
If you'll look at appendix C, the recommended coaches, advisors for this year's fine arts is attached. And part of the recent teacher settlement, we added a $1,000 stipend, which will be included for a position of the National Honor Society advisor at the high school. And Kim Niss is working to fill that. And along with that, appendix C, if you have anything you want to ask about, it's right there. And I would make a motion that we approve the coaching assignments and the fine arts activities for 2017 and 2018.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, we have a motion in a second to approve the coaching assignments for the 2017-18 fine arts activity schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to board committee reports. Danielle, CER advisory committee meeting?
Yeah, we met on Thursday, August 9th. It was kind of a quick meeting. Ronnie went over kind of the spring and summer activities. There was 1,176 participants between all the activities that they had, which they have quite a list of them that run through the spring and summer. So that was really good to see all the numbers and what programs are being utilized and stuff. The new catalog did go out yesterday for the fall and winter activities. November 9th is Community Education Day and open house. And so stop by CER and see them. They'll have some things going on. And then that's also our next meeting. And then we also talked about different donations and sponsorships that came in throughout the summer, which is always good to see the community and who's supporting the programs that are being put out there. And because CER works really hard and offers a lot to our students and community, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Danielle?
Okay, I'm reporting on the operations committee, which was held on September 22nd. And at that meeting, we talked about the proposed tax levy that was approved tonight. We also discussed that we'll be having ISG out of Mankato provide some clarification on the bids that we received to replace the lighting in our district with LED lights. And we should be hearing from them soon. And that will be the main topic of our operations committee meeting on Monday, October 9th, to review those findings. We also discussed the contract with Dyken, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, for the chillers in both buildings. They're the ones who have in the past been responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep. And anytime there's a problem, for coming out and fixing those. And we have, we approved continuing with them at an increase of 3% each year at the elementary school and at the high school. There's no increase for the first year and a 3% increase for the next four years. And we approved that request. We also discussed the rent for the Hunt Farm for the 2018 growing season and approved the $267 per acre amount for rent. And that will be rented by Chris Carlson, who has previously been renting the Hunt Farm for three years. That money is what we use for the grants that are, is it in the spring? When we usually approve those grants. That's what that money is used for. We discussed the facility rent for Kids Against Hunger. That is a really neat program that is driven by and run by students. And they outgrew the previous place where it was held at the Opera House because there's been so much community support. So they've been having it at the PAC in the past. There's been no rent charged to those students for the use of the facility. And we approved continuing that tradition. The 2016-17 fundraising log was presented. And we also discussed a banner for the gym following the passing of Dennis Murphy. Their family gave a donation to the school in the amount of $3,000 to be used in his memory. And there's a proposal to put a banner above the, in the basketball courts, right below the concession stand. And there was some discussion about the cost of that. And it was, it's estimated that it will be about $5,700. The Booster Club will pay 1,000 of that and the operations- And the operations committee approved $1,700 to be used in that effort. And there will be a committee that is put together to make sure it meets all, everybody's expectations. And it's a neat way to recognize Mr. Murphy, who was such a big part of our school and the basketball program for so many years. And that was basically the gist of our meeting. Any questions?
Just one question I have. Is the farm lease, is that just a one-year lease or will that be? Is that based on, I mean, I know we are continuing it, but I just didn't know if it was a one-year or two-year?
Yes, it's a one-year.
One-year.
We'll review it again.
And then renegotiate. Okay, just curious.
And we did check with the average farm rates locally and that seemed to be right in there with the average, so.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to our last committee report, Southern Plains, from Julie.
Yep, met last night. Just kind of the regular stuff, bills and finance and stuff. We did have one resignation, a paraprofessional at Fairmont High School and hiring of some paraprofessionals at the high school through the time too as well. Worked, employee work agreement that was approved. We had some policies that we looked at and we, some were just a first reading, some were second reading. There is a new policy that was put in place for service animals. And so that was a first reading for that. And that was really it, so. Short and sweet.
All right, any questions for Julie? No, with that, if there's no more discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting at 5:24 p.m.? So signify.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.